I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, all.
Morning.
Morning, Nathan.
Morning, how are you?
I'm good, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, Bruce.
Alright, look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I would move approve the amended agenda as printed.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Uh, minutes from twelve three.
I believe they're the same as they were. Everything looks to be in order. Motion to approve minutes from twelve three.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. General public concern. I think they know why the other are here.
They're generally concerned, just not publicly, right?
They're concerned, yes. Alright, we'll start out with the, uh, county budget amendment FY eighteen nineteen. So let Peggy.
I move we open a public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign.
There's a copy for Nathan.
Eight thirty-three.
If anybody else would like a copy, there's more here.
Dr. Heston, later.
There were only two changes to this.
I like something that came in.
There are only two changes to this budget amendment. One of them was the, uh, the medical issues for the jail. Dean had sent me an email and said that there was a prisoner that needed to go to the hospital for something. And so he needed an additional ten thousand put in his budget. He said it seems to be happening more and more often. So, and then the other amendment was the weed spray billing, that second weed spray billing, which you noticed was in the claims for this time. This amendment will cover the dollars for that. And that was for ten thousand, so this amendment is for twenty thousand dollars.
Shouldn't that directly come out of the weed commissioners' pay?
Personal budget.
Oh, yeah, we could.
To my knowledge, you're not paying the weed commissioner, so I can't help ya.
It's gonna be twenty thousand in the hole, right, or ten thousand?
We're gonna be for amendment next year.
You volunteered.
I was railroaded.
Alright, so the amendment is for twenty?
Mm-hmm.
I move we close the public hearing.
With no.
You better ask for public comment.
Yeah, not public comments.
They want to comment before we close the hearing.
Alright, now we'll accept your.
Okay.
Close it at eight thirty-four. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Uh, motion to adopt the resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, budget amendment for fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
We have a motion to, for the resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-one. And, uh, is there a second?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Carries. Okay.
We're teaming in jury, Brian. Let's go longer.
Well, I think with, uh, do you suppose we ought to wait for that in case someone's coming and to voice anything on that? If we split the difference and wait till twenty-two, we can, we can do our.
We approve the claim.
Claims.
Bingo.
There we go. Anybody have a chance to look at the claims?
Yeah, make a motion to approve. Uh, the general, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents. Drainage for the brush and weed spraying, eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one, fifty-nine. That's exactly what I had, I second his motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the claims. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
We have a parcel of land, too, that, um, the Petersons wanted to donate to us, we can discuss that.
Okay.
There's a copy for the press if they want. The one for you, just to follow.
Peggy, did you, yeah, I had, uh, contacted from, uh, our friend Charles Gunderson. And obviously, kind of spelled out the letter, uh, neither party would be available to be here. But is there any, he was just concerned, is there any issues with anything? And I said, I wasn't aware of it.
The legal description was checked out and it said, because I should have made a copy of this, I'm sorry, I didn't. But it's just a small parcel of land that is by the road.
It's just, uh, south of, I'm, yeah, probably should, this could have happened many, many years ago when the, uh, right of way was changed with the curves that the, never really got.
Well, this is that center on the curve, it's, well, except for some of the, uh, it's right, you know, the road curves there now.
It's, it's a little corner piece, basically, that's, nothing's been done with it for ever, but it, and it, it was still in Peterson's name. They just wanted to, basically, they're just giving it to the county, which is basically, it's gonna stay what it is right away. But it takes their name off of it as a landlord.
It's all tactical.
Everything was looked over here and there's no concerns on anything?
Yes, it's been checked out, everything seems to be fine.
Well, okay, not any issues, I'd make, uh, I'd make a motion to take title on this parcel as listed from Gary and Lori Peterson, if that taken care of.
Alright, so we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
And I will hit that deed recorded, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Peggy.
Okay, how about, uh, anything else that we could start through before?
The courthouse security cameras?
Yeah, we can do that.
Travis was in on Thursday. And he had gone through, as you remember, and looked at all the cam, where more cameras should be put up. And he said that he'd get a quote to you, so he did submit the quote, he did give me, I can't remember if I gave you copies of the, of the, where he's going to put them, but I thought you could look at those pictures, but we probably don't wanna make them public too much, but there's the pictures if we need. Um, his quote, total quote is twenty-eight thousand, nine oh six oh nine for everything to get those cameras put together.
Was that Travis from Electra Specialty?
Yes, Electra Specialty, sorry.
What was his last name?
Camping. So it's just a matter of if this looks okay to you, then having the chairman sign it. Um, if it's not, then we send it back to him and he adjusts it to whatever you want it to be.
I made additional cameras again.
Four.
Four, you, you, units of four, right?
Right. And that safeguard video management server, he said is large enough that it could accept more to them. That was the issue on, on some of the older things that we couldn't have, Kibati. This one we could, 'cause I already thought of one other camera that he could put up and he said, oh, we can add that later on, if he guys want, so.
I think the previous discussion was this is all being designed with, like Peggy said, for additional, uh, equipment down the road.
Yep.
With that in mind, but this is the start of our new upgrading security, which I think is a necessary evil.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Well, with that, do you maybe wanna?
I would make the motion to authorize the chairman to sign a quote on the courthouse security cameras.
We have a motion to accept this quote.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion?
And just for the public information, we do have that money put in our budget for this year.
I was gonna say, I thought.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yep.
The, uh.
So it's not any additional taxes.
Yes, the other thing was, they've been working on this for several.
Two, three years.
Yeah, years, it seems like. And trying to make the thing as clear as possible. So anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries, is he gonna try to work on this like after the first of the year?
He wondered how soon, and I said, well, we'd like it done, you know, by June to June.
Yesterday?
So it's in this year's fiscal year budget. And he did say he is almost ready to start working on the door locks. There's a couple of parts that he's ordered that, for some reason or other, are in back order. So he's waiting for that, but he was hoping after the first year to get started on that.
Call for this quote, then, for, you told him by June, he's, that'll be fine, he'll get it done.
Yeah, he was okay with that.
Okay.
I'm on the accepted line?
Yes.
Okay.
After those two things are done, then we should be in pretty good shape.
We're in good shape for, start with Brian.
Ready for me?
Yep.
Well, the DNR inspected the Avery's site on Thursday, and I went out there, followed them around to see what concerns that they had. Uh, they said everything looked good, couple minor questions on calculations. The only question that they had was, uh, there's an acreage across the road and the owners of that property have always signed a separation waiver. And they, the house is vacant now. The father of the family died several years ago, but they, they're keeping the house there. So the, uh, trustee or power of attorney for the family farm signed off on a new separation waiver. So, and the DNR just wanted that filed, and that hasn't been done yet. The owner didn't have it with him at the time, but I've seen a copy of it, and that was basically the only thing that they needed done before they'd sign off on the permit. So, I don't know if you have any questions. I guess in that email I sent you out, I explained a little bit what they were doing, just enlarging the size of the barns.
Yeah, they've had the copy of, that you gave him, and it, picture's always worth a thousand words. Basically, they're adding a couple at least of the existing building.
Yep, and then they're.
Building one new.
Then they're adding one new one, and it's basically just to give them more room to qualify for gap one or welfare compassionate marketing, basically, so you can sell to Whole Foods and places like that and get a higher market price.
And the story was, it's not a per, or a capacity increase.
Same animal units. Same animal units, he's just giving them more room. So, and that's kind of the way, that's the way the industry is trending. So to do away with the, uh, fair wing crates and gestation stalls. I know, maybe you guys have seen that in the news the last four or five years, and, and that's, it takes a little while for the producers to remodel the barns to keep up with the market demand, but.
So that's the story on this, and it doesn't appear that it'd be any thing, any more or less than that at all?
No, no, I, I think there was one note in there that the DNR made that the, the end of the one existing building is within the one thousand feet of the river, but it's, it's been there forty years, so they're adding on to the opposite end of it, so.
That's the only concern I have, is that the river's right there and it's downhill, but, uh, that's one of the original sites in Humboldt County, and they've not had any trouble with it not leaking over the years, so.
And the way that the sites are on those, it's got three lagoons. The two side ones carry the sediment, and the separate, the central one is an evaporation pond. It's got about three times the capacity it needs, so basically, the manure that's there is very diluted. And the, uh, center pond is for evaporation. So, I mean, it's, it's not like a finisher, it's, uh, very diluted.
Yeah, David mentioned something that's probably in all these specs, that the manure holding capacity as far exceeds the number of animals there.
Yep.
Oh, and so probably, oh, it has for a long time.
Yeah, yep.
So in your opinion, everything looks good up to snuff?
I didn't say anything, the DNR was gonna come back when they started pouring concrete to make sure that the separation distances were correct for the well, and, uh.
This is their own well?
Yeah, yep, yep, on-site well. And they, uh, did the annual inspection around the lagoons. We walked around them and looked at them, and there wasn't any, any red flags for the DNR, so. Said they just wanted a copy of that separation agreement in hand, and I think that was maybe even questionable since it's been vacant for so many years, but since it's always been agreeable.
That's alright. And there was somebody that could sign it, and did?
Yep, yep, it has been signed, and, um, yeah, I think that's the third time, and there's been agreement ever since the place was built.
Yeah, I think Rich has died probably ten years ago. It's been a long time.
So the one even lives there?
No, no.
Nobody lives there.
Vacant, and, and the owner of the property has offered to buy the acres, and the family just doesn't want to sell it, so.
I see nothing wrong with it, I make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Well, we have a motion.
Permit?
Second that.
And a second, any other discussion?
Thanks, Brian, for going through all of the.
Not a problem, not a problem.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Alright, we appreciate your help very much.
You bet, and you guys got my email about the, the open house.
Mm-hmm.
Normally.
Yeah.
I get some of those as well. Was that an Iowa select?
Yeah.
Yeah, they get most of them, actually.
Yeah, yeah, no, if you guys have the opportunity, that is probably gonna be a really neat place to go through.
Plan any to go?
Yeah, I'd love to go over there on my own time, just, uh, I went through the finisher a month or two ago.
It'd still be clean, wouldn't it?
Real.
Yeah.
That's the only way they let you in.
Well, yeah, the, the south farms, you just can't hardly ever get in. Um, they, and since it's, uh, it's open, but, uh, or since it's new and it hasn't been ventilated yet. But I was really impressed when I toured the, uh, the finisher, on the information that they had, and what I got learned, and just checking out the construction. I basically went over there for my own benefit of seeing how the, uh, fences for the odor control were constructed. And, uh, that was, that was pretty interesting. It's basically a big plastic mesh and some barbed wire strands going out horizontally to it. And the barbed wire charges the air, so your odor is carried on your dust particles. So when the dust is exhausted out at the end of the barn, it's sticky and it sticks to that plastic. And Iowa State's doing tests, and they're thinking it cuts down odors by at least fifty percent, so.
Yeah, if you go buy some of these new ones where you don't have a smell.
Yeah.
They're designed right. We've got a couple of them, just most of the ones, y'all don't put in.
No, I've got a lot of them.
Got one. There was some discussion, we heard of Charles City about, maybe changing the matrix to mandate they plant trees around it, too. That'd help a little bit.
Well, and, and, uh, from what I see, these, if, uh, the guys are already starting to do that, like this one up there, I think.
Three sites, three sites.
Good Iowa select say they're going to put the, uh, odor mitigation fences in each new site.
I like so.
So, yeah.
Well, it, it's good, it's, it's the correct thing to do.
Well, I think it's just a good neighbor policy, it's how things evolve, and you figure out what, what works for a good neighbor policy, and, and just do it, and, and, uh.
Just get prestige to do that, too.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for your extracurricular going into these open houses and just taking a look, I think that's a very good.
I'm a bricks and sticks guy, I like to know how things are made, and that's basically why.
Everybody does that, but it, I'm sure helps.
Yeah, and I was just amazed at the extra knowledge that I picked up on nutrient management and what the company did and other industry details.
You gonna flash over there in your airplane?
I'm not current now, so.
You don't, don't want to ride, okay? Thanks for passing that along to the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Any others questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thanks, bye.
I don't see Jamie here yet. We have a few more minutes, we can work on some of this other stuff.
Tell me Steve, this, that's your office, is ready?
If they would be available early.
Yep.
I guess they don't have the time.
Want some coffee, but you got your own.
I got water. Get that coffee done, I have, I'll get it.
I get Dave's, son.
Morning.
Do you want these at all, or? I'm trying to find mine. I figured that might help. We just have, um, white for, for.
Okay.
You're listening, okay. We, um, a while back, came down with a bunch of cancellation of homesteads, and then, um, Peggy's office sends out letters, nullifies them, and then they have an opportunity to respond, um, if it's incorrect or not. And we had a couple of them here, and it was, uh, um, this is, uh, people upstairs. And it, what happened was this, um, the lady had life use of the property, and, um, we missed that. And since it went out of her name with these other people on it, um, we canceled it. But she's there, and she has life use, and it needs to be reinstated.
Reinstated?
Yeah, for both of them.
Well, it was taken off, but it shouldn't have been.
Right.
You just have to put it back on.
Yep, yep.
Gotta save her a few dollars on taxes.
Yep.
Well, I'd move we reinstate the application, so, so, homestead application, reinstate that one. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for reinstatement of the two properties. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Now it's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna talk county websites?
We are.
I said I know.
You'll be all done, you'll get a delivery.
I know.
Won't hurt her really.
Ready for drainage?
Yeah.
She gets to file the claims.
What do you, what do you got on that, Peggy?
Um, I talked to, sent an email out to the officers that came and listened to the presentations, and nobody was definitive either way or the other. They liked them both. Um, so I sent emails out to, I knew Webster County had revised, um, Wright County had revised, um, just to ask them, you know, are they easy to work with? Are they, um, 'cause that's the company I kind of was leaning towards, just because of the fact that they had a cleaner website, um, they seemed to really know what they were doing. And I've, I've seen the other websites, you know, and they look very nice and very easy to work with. So I got reports back, um, that they, they all liked the company. They found the people very non-tech and very understanding, um, they were easy to work with, um, I liked the way the website looks. I won't go into details on what else she said. She would recommend revise, I asked her about any problems. Um, the only problem she had was, um, after the install, is any communication with them through the web portal? And it isn't talking to them on the phone, and she felt like she can describe it better to them, talking on the phone and typing it out on the computer. So for her, that was an issue, that was Webster County. But, uh, she said they were very good to, to use, even though she did it on the website. Um, and also Westers, um, Wright Counties. They fix things fast, they've been attentive with customer service, um, they had a very informative walkthrough when they were putting the site together, they like how it turns out. Um, they would definitely recommend them for larger entities with a lot of information, um, or like a county with multiple departments. They had a problem with some updates they were doing that would freeze up when they were trying to make too many changes at once. But they thought that was probably upper here error. And I did talk to revise and said to them, if we have you do the updates, because we have four people currently in the courthouse who do the updates, but for some reason or other, the same person always gets sent all the information, and she's feeling a little overwhelmed. So I talked to revise last week, and I said, if we decided to go with you, and if we decided to have you guys do the updates, would that be okay? Could you do that? And he said, oh, definitely. Um, but he said, what about the simpler things, like just uploading the form only takes a few, few seconds? He said he could have that done in thirty seconds. And I said, well, if they're simple things, yeah, we could stay with that, but if we're changing logos, or if we're changing pictures, or if we're doing things like that, that's gonna take some time. We don't really have anyone that's got a lot of time on their hands and film dedicated that they could do this. So they were okay with that. And I have no problem with the Solutions side either, they're, they're a very, uh, good site, and they would have done all of the updates themselves also. They said they thought it was better to not have the employees going in and doing stuff, because then it messes up something else they didn't intend to, and then they gotta go in and fix it, and he even had commented in his meeting with us that they would do all the updates. Um, prices are definitely different between the two, we're looking at five thousand versus twenty. Um, revise has offered to do a half and half thing, nine thousand when you start, and then the other nine thousand, whatever, when they're done. So it could be split over two years if it, depending upon the timing of the project.
Or is it comparing apples to apples, or?
I don't think you can on a website, because it's all, all what the company offers you. Um, we didn't have any specs to say, okay, here's where we want you to fall in these perimeters. If we would have done that, it would have been half a thousand.
Well, fifteen thousand difference, I mean, is this one gonna do everything that this one does?
Oh, and, and that I.
Well, one thing, having attended both, uh, presentations, and I thought they were both real good, the revise, one thing that, that they did make note of in their presentation, they start from scratch.
Yes.
There's, it's no template, that's what, it's quite not the only thing their company does, but I think websites are a huge part of what their company does, or maybe it is the only thing they do, is websites.
I think so.
So, A, dedicated, B, they start from scratch. And I asked our buddy Max, when he was here for the.
Solutions.
And he said, this is a template. You know, to what degree that matters, I don't know, but I kinda like the idea that this is.
So this is just a general template, kind of a template to make that work for us, and this one over here is building a system for us.
Basically, yes. They, they don't have, they start from scratch. So every entity, counties, cities, anyone that they work with, it's, it's all tailored to what they want, uh, how they want it. Yeah, and the apples to oranges, apples to apples, whatever comparison. There were some other costs, too, I think with the Solutions, yearly.
Yes.
Versus, I don't know, with the revised, it does seem like a lot, you know, a lot of money, obviously, to build the website, but I don't think there was much yearly cost with that.
The revised was three thousand and something a year for.
Which is basically their, their servers, isn't it?
Right, yeah.
Because that is information, the website stuff is not here, it's someplace else, and they both companies sounded like that. Their mechanisms were more than adequate, you know, very safe, safety conscious for all the stuff that can get out there. Nothing could get back in far many of our systems, and, I don't know, I don't, I just, something about this, and I don't think any of us are website experts, but I, I was impressed with the revised, and it sounded like you got a lot of favorable comments back from people that are using it.
I did, and revised said it's part of their program to, was it, I mean, third year or fourth year, they update your website.
Yes.
For you. So you don't have to go to the extra expense of doing it all over again, they just, it's part of your package and they'll update it. Solutions said they would do that, but it was, can't remember, it was like three years or four years that they did, too? But it wouldn't be a complete rebuild, it'd just be refreshing the site to.
I think that was part of the lure for, uh, Solutions as to using something else that's already been used on another, in another town versus this is specifically built for Humboldt. And I think if you get on your computer and look at Wright County, um, there are all the towns that revised has. And I think if you get on your computer and look at Wright County, um, there are all the towns that revise has. They, it's really a fresh look. I mean, I, I was impressed with them.
Good. I wasn't just imagining that. I just felt there was some, there is a differential between the two.
And we're very fortunate in Humboldt County that we have some very good photographers here.
Yeah.
And we've been seeing a lot of certain persons, um, and that even was mentioned in Webster County. Boy, if I had that guy in my county, I'd be using him for pictures.
And they will use those pictures.
Yeah, and they will use those pictures. So, and I'm sure everybody has seen them. They're very nice.
So if you're, I mean, are you wanting to take a chan, or take a week and look on, say, some of those websites?
Yes.
And come back next week and we can, that way we have Rick's.
Or just, uh...
Are we just, this is more discussion or are we looking for an action to move forward?
It's also...
It, uh...
Either one, you can just discuss and make action next week or you can decide no. And we do have the money set aside for that in the computer.
The staff had no preference? Did they lean one way or the other?
It seems to me like in the long run, they're gonna come out about the same, except one's tailored for us and the other one's just a template for general, so.
Right.
I make the motion to go with the, what is it, uh, revise?
I'd actually second that motion to keep this moving.
All right. We have a motion in a second for revise to be named as the website vendor. Any other discussion?
When will they start to work? Have we approved it?
Yeah, the timeframe, Peggy, could, what did you get, take away from that?
He actually did send me a contract, so by your motion, you could go ahead and...
He said, now they're, they're out of, what was it, Michigan?
Or maybe I would put, I'd put the contract probably on next week. That way, keep it cleaner that way. Um, and yeah, then they could start.
Immediately.
Yeah.
There's a timeframe, well, you were at really both of those. I mean, it's, it doesn't just take overnight. It takes a little while for them to build it and some back and forth. And then there's a pre-launching that just, we can look at, so...
Well, they want computer gurus like you and I.
Oh, absolutely.
Give it our, all our fingers.
I just mean to give them a blessing and say, move forward and everyone look at it and I, I think it's going to be fine. But, uh, you talk to them about, so are you talking a split fiscal year payment?
We could if we wanted to.
And they were agreeable for that?
Yeah, yeah.
And for you guys, our hope is we're gonna be able to put, um, applications for, for anything like, you know, Dial's building a new machine shed. And I don't want to start that. Dial decides I want to put a machine shed out here and hopefully the planning and zoning will be, all you gotta do is go on our website, pull that thing up and then we don't have, um, somebody down the hall that drives in and says, well, when did you put this machine shed up? Cause we don't have a copy of that building permit. It's on our website. And it's all is taken care of and what the weed commissioners, our goal is, is that, you know, if you spot something that we can hopefully, you know, use this as opposed to just stumbling around and...
Yeah, it's interactive.
And that was the reason why we asked specific questions. Can this be set so that secondary roads or whoever can have their own little area and it was...
Yeah, you could go out and fill out a form and say, on this road, there's some damage to the side. And they would get that report and go out and take a look at it.
It is, it...
Yeah, a lot of really neat...
I'm right for that, but we have the ability to track that John Norman turned this thing in on December twelfth and it's now October of the following year and we still haven't, okay, well, there is, you do have the right to come in here and be mad that we still haven't done anything. So, you know, it's, it's kinda putting us on the spot so that we're accountable to, you know, um, so that's kind of our whole thing in a nutshell that if we revise this and everybody, cause today's day and age with the computer, uh...
We might be, we might be a little old and stodgy here, but it's, it moves forward. One of the, well, in, between both these presentations, they, I don't know, obviously the younger generation, they do everything on their phone. And this is all compatible to that. So, you know, like it or not, you know, the non-technical people, eventually we're gonna just move on and, and more technical people, and this is a good time to, to start this up, to make it accessible and user-friendly for their dealings with the county.
And we're hoping to get ordinances on there, drainage maps, things that people would like to look at, but maybe they can't get into the office, that they're at home and, and it's a snowy day and they wanna look at something on drainage, so then they can pull up a drainage map and see it.
We have a lot of possibilities with this.
Not that we don't want people in the office.
No.
Trying to make it easier for people who can't.
Yes, well, some of these things are a little technical and if they have access to it on their own time, it's much easier and much quicker.
Yeah, for some of us old crotchety old guys, we're gonna have to go get the grandkids for sure.
That's okay. You just, you, you know, that's what you do.
I'm asking you to tell which grandkids going on a tour with me. They'll be the ones running the phone. I'll be saying, I think it's this next corner. No, grandpa, it's not. Keep going.
We have good resources with the younger generation to help out with the technology, but it's gonna be...
It's going though.
It is, it is. I think it's a really good step in the right direction and, and, um...
I think that was part of the other, for drainage on Friday that we uncovered, that hopefully we're gonna be able to...
Got some discussion on that too.
Take another step forwards too, so, anyway. I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries.
Do you want to check for Hollins, Jamie?
I ain't, I haven't heard him. That's why I was about to come. Wonder if I should call upstairs.
Maybe the weather too. Yeah, maybe the weather's setting back.
Peggy, thanks for checking. Did you just send out like an email to, you know, counties that you knew were using the revised? And you got that kind of response back? Very positive. I appreciate that. It's always good to ask people who are using it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from somebody who's using it, yeah. It makes better sense.
If you wanna buy a new vehicle of whatever sort, it's nice to ask someone that has one.
Yeah.
And if they say, I'm pretty pleased with this, you feel more confident.
Makes more sense than telling to the salesman.
Well, yeah, everything, it's always good if you talk to the salesman.
That's true, that's true.
Well, thanks for doing that.
You're welcome. Um, I was gonna bring up too about our meeting for the week of Christmas. I don't have it on the agenda. Next week will actually decide. The twenty-sixth is a Wednesday. We do have claims, but I'm wondering if you wanna meet like that Friday, the twenty-first, and do it all then. That gives you the week of Christmas off. Unless you want to come in on Wednesday. But we can have the claims ready for you early on the twenty-first and meet, you know, at ten o'clock or something and then...
It's just unfair to me. Is it particularly for claims?
Yeah, and if there's any other little things that come up.
Because we have a meeting, so the, I should look at my calendar.
And the same thing's gonna hit us with New Years, but we won't have claims. We do have to meet January second.
And that's Wednesday, Peggy?
Yep, for, for organizational meeting. So that week we'll have to meet. But we don't necessarily have to meet that last week of December for claims. We can move it up to the twenty-first unless you want to.
Does claim to be due in, if we're gonna meet Friday, it'd be in, when do you have to have them in?
Well, they're all always supposed to be in by Wednesday, but we have some people bring them in Thursday and so we're just gonna have to start getting tougher on people there and people get their claims after.
So you're asking that would be next week?
I just mentioned to these guys, instead of meeting next Wednesday or the twenty-sixth to do claims, we can meet the twenty-first, which is Friday. And then that way you'd have that whole week of Christmas off for those of you who might be traveling to families and that.
I'm, whatever works for you guys, I'm willing...
Works for me.
And you're thinking, uh, mid-morning on the twenty-first?
Yep, and we'll officially decide next week on the agenda, but, um, say nine, nine-thirty, somewhere in there. Give us some time to make sure we got everything ready for you, so...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. You know, just nothing, and maybe something similar which we can discuss for the week of New Years as well. Well, we don't have them.
We have to meet on the second.
We have to.
For organizational...
This was a different deal, but it, it does take off then, that week of, the twenty-fourth of Christmas.
We have to meet so I can move all my stuff to the other end.
Oh, yes.
And you could do it on the twenty-first.
Well, I think that's a good idea. Put it down tentatively and agree on, it'd be pretty short and sweet.
Yep, and that'll be in next week's agenda and for you to officially make a motion and decide.
I have a call in to Jamie, but I don't see him and it's ten after, so I guess we are just gonna have to shuffle into the bottom if he shows up. I can't believe he wouldn't call me.
Hopefully he's okay.
I hope so, so...
We need to go to drainage, right?
Uh, let's see, we have a, unless you wanna do, uh, our reports, then you're done.
You certainly can if you want to.
We quickly do our reports and then Peggy's out of here, we go to drainage and be out.
All right.
One step ahead and she can go start on her claims file.
On Wednesday, the fifth of December, I went to Almackee County for...
We've all been to it too.
That's right.
For a CSS meeting and basically everything's going pretty smooth. They wouldn't, I guess the counties are kinda slowed down. They're gonna stay where they are. Nobody take the Sioux County because they hadn't paid their bills, so they're gonna stay where they are too.
That's not good.
They paid part of it now, but I think the movement there is kinda quieted down. The big concern we have is the managed care organizations are not paying the regions their money and we pay the providers, the regions, managed care people don't pay the regions and then the state says we can't have the twenty-five percent carryover and you run short of money. So they hired more people just to beat on those managed care operators to see if they get the money coming in. And that's happening all over the state of Iowa. You read about that a lot.
Yeah.
And then on Thursday, Dave and I went to Charles City. I'll let you report on that, Dave.
You will. I'm also at the CFR open house Tuesday.
CFR open house Tuesday downtown. They talked about what's happening. Bruce is on that board, particularly the services they provide in the eighth county area and about the new building downtown in Fort Dodge. And on Thursday, we went to Charles City and I'll let Dave report on that, but Peggy, so nice. Each county makes up a brochure, handout, show and tell when they call the roll. Peggy made a picture of our courthouse, so that was on the front of ours. So we have a photographer built in here. If anybody's here, said you can read about those counties and what they're doing in their counties. I think that was the extent of my meetings.
Friday you were at Drainage.
Oh, Drainage, yeah. We all went to Drainage on Friday. I thought it was a better meeting we had.
I thought it was a good one.
Good meeting.
I was, I was really impressed. It wasn't the same old same old, good meeting, good attendance.
I even left before lunch, that's all.
Well, that's terrible. That's good lunch.
It was a good lunch, but I haven't made crack, so...
One of the things I took home from that meeting, not only Drainage things, but the fact that it's important to call eight-one-one on digging. I dig first. I never saw that. The contractor's going out there and tearing up tile.
Were you know?
Examples of explosions that happen.
I went out there to that one by Hunter Mark north. Saturday I drove around. All of a sudden I see all these yellow flags going across the city. You know what I'm wondering what them yellow flags are? I walk over there and it's pipeline.
The gas pipeline.
Gas pipeline, so thank God that contractor had done his work and, because we saw this video of us up by Hinton. The plane was flying over and this thing, he, he went to make his turn and kaboom, a tire hit the, what was it, twenty-six, twenty-four inch line?
Big gas line. It was like an atomic bomb.
This thing just looked like it just crystallized the ground.
The eight-one-ones people fly an airplane over surveillance all the time. They see something suspicious, they drop flags out, try to scare people into making the call. It's free, so they, all they do...
On the flag it says, stop and...
Cease and desist.
Cease and desist and make a call.
So it was, they were fined over four, what was it, over four hundred thousand for their, just what they did to the pipeline, the machine, the tractor. Neither one of the guys got hurt. The next day, they started, they were going back out there. They didn't call the second time. They didn't call, they started running tile again and they had to stop them because, um, you still didn't call for a locate. Well, they figured, you can see the ground was cracked where the... We have the material. It shows pictures of it, but it was, but the video was pretty...
Ten minute video was really great.
Yeah, it was like, holy cow, this guy's going over in a plane and he calls, he's on the radio calling, say, hey, there's somebody up there doing this. I'm on tile and we don't have any, he turns around all, kaboom. So, yeah, that was, you never think of a tile machine hitting something like that. They said with the freezing thaw and changing the, that dredge ditches when they're cleaning them out.
They go home to the point two, not just the eighth district. The farmer goes out and puts his corner post down.
Yeah.
We don't think about calling eight-one-one.
Us putting a tree in your backyard. You still want to do that?
Removing stump, old trees.
So...
It's free service. They'll get there shortly.
Right. Okay.
Sorry about that. Four meetings. Thanks, Bruce, for reminding me.
Uh, Tuesday, I knew I wouldn't get out to the hog site with the DNR on Thursday, so I went out, looked at the site, drove around it, checked everything out according to the master matrix and everything there. Everything looked good. Wednesday, I had a workforce development meeting and a Midas meeting at the same time. And Travis covered for Midas for the county, so I went to the workforce development and, uh, took care of that. I've got some book there if anybody wants to read all the interesting material that'll put you to sleep. Thursday, Carl said we went up to Charles City to the supervision meeting. I did learn some stuff up there, talking with different supervisors. One of the things I learned, and I talked to Dean about it, um, one of the counties, and I think it was Winnebago County, they got their radio towers, they had to put up several different towers, like three point some million dollars they were spending on their radio system, communications. And their emergency manager got a grant for quite a bit of it. And, uh...
That the Rice Grant too?
No, I'm not sure which grant it was. They talked about two or three different grants. And then, uh, one of the counties does all their own box coverets and everything except the DOT bridges. They do all their own work. And, uh, oh, they recommended, uh, if you got a computer or cellphone, uh, separate your county with your personal so you don't have them all on the same unit. But in case of a lawsuit or something, I think it was. It was an interesting meeting. We learned quite a bit. I blew my stack, sorry.
No, you didn't. You just made them shut up.
With hearing aids, I cannot hear when there's all kinds of people talking and everybody was talking at the same time and I raised my hand, I stood up and I said, hey. Just as loud as I could say it. And it got quiet. And I says, nobody can hear a damn thing with everybody talking. All it sounds like is a bunch of chickens out here, so let's just be quiet.
We was arguing about the matrix, that that...
Master matrix.
Smell versus drainage.
Anyway, I apologize to them. Then Friday, we went down to the drainage meeting in Fort Dodge.
The workforce development, was that in Fort Dodge?
That was in Fort Dodge. And as long as we got one person from the county, which we had, Travis from Humboldt, were represented on the board down there. Him and I are both on the board along with Alicia. So he covered it. I went to the other meeting, so they have a forum.
Man, dinner there. I sure do you went there.
No, I missed that dinner. I missed the dinner one. I went to the other one. I know nobody was there.
Okay, this past Monday, the third, I had a law enforcement, uh, meeting, uh, Monday morning for our meeting. And then, uh, good discussion on the meeting on the seventh at Fort Dodge, Iowa Drainage District Association Conference Meeting I attended. There was good discussion on that, so. It's two I had this past week.
All right. Tuesday, I was at the CFR open house up here at the chamber office. Unfortunately, we didn't have a whole lot of people attending, but there was some, some people there, so it was good. Uh, that was Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, that one was canceled. Uh, Thursday, I met with Renee up here and along with Ben. Renee is, uh, I have a card in here for each one of us. She was, uh, up here and, uh, once to before the next year or before our contracts are up in, what, twenty-twenty-one, she'd like to go over our handbook. once to before the next year, or before our contracts are up in twenty-twenty-one, um, she'd like to go over our handbook. She said our handbook is in serious need of, uh, some re, rework, so I, um, she said after the first of the year, she would be in contact with Peggy and, and, uh, hopefully we can get that updated.
Any questions?
Um, then on Thursday night, I had a CFR meeting in, uh, Webster City. Things are progressing at that new building. They're sheet rocking and everything's enclosed. They were trying to do some, uh, siding. Then Friday, I was over at the drainage meeting at Starlight in Fort Dodge, so those were my meetings.
I might just, oh, go ahead.
I just see that we have Ben at the end there, so Peggy's gonna have to come back in anyway, so.
Sorry guys.
I would just say that since I'm writing out in a pair of water after a couple more meetings, I encourage you guys to try to go to that district meeting in Charles City. You learn so much, and Dave, you attached to that. Just, they call and roll and you learn so much what's happening in their counties. We had the whole ISAC staff there also, so. It's, it's, and you wanna put it on your calendar now, it's always the Thursday before the drainage district meeting in Fort Dodge.
Is it, is it always in Charles City?
Always in Charles City, the other side. So, it's the Thursday and then we go to drainage on Friday. Been that way for four years.
They had five politicians there and none of them could get on the same page.
I got an idea, if the same thing happens next year, if you and I go, let's tell them that up front, the politicians.
Then you won't have to yell at them.
Yeah, well, there's five politicians there and two of them got to arguing back and forth over stuff.
The smell versus drainage. This is the campaign crowd, boys.
For, he was thinking it was another day and not, so-
You owe him more for each other than you do for me.
Getting back in for a reschedule on that.
Scratch that one off.
Yeah, Jamie's definitely gone and all that, I'm assuming that is, they restructured the, the board, they've made the board more condensed. So, we're instead of meeting in Eagle Grove, we're now starting meeting in Fort Dodge. So, going over, I'm sure that's the end of that and asking for our continued support, I'm sure for Edno for next year. We'll put him back in, up in a week or two. Alright, with that-
Motion to go on drainage?
Motion to go to drainage.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign.
And we'll get Chris for ya.
Peggy, are we good with all this stuff, if I take it in?
Oh, yes, you bet.
I gotta take this computer and throw it down.
I mean, give it to her.
Anybody want coffee? We got extra coffee over here. Dave made it, no, Eric made it this time. Eric made it this time.
He's worse than you, he doesn't even drink coffee.
I drink that stuff. I make it, but I don't drink it.
Did you put salt in it?
Yep. I don't hear, cuz I don't make it here. You want some more? Kate, you need some more?
No, I haven't.
You don't like salt in your coffee, huh? Takes the bitterness out. An old, an older lady told me that one time. Cause I asked her why she salt in the coffee.
Morning, Rick.
Morning.
Morning.
Hi. Carl, Dave.
How's things up northeast, northwest?
About same, cold. We got more snow on the ground though.
You can keep it.
Everything's covered, yeah, so.
I was in Newton yesterday and they didn't have any over there whatsoever, completely dry.
I believe it. We were down in Ames yesterday, they had so much less.
We'll be a little farther to the sweet, it gets as warm as they pay it well, so.
I hope it does.
It's gotta, it's gotta get warmer. I washed the car, it's gonna get dirty again.
They was knifing in that manure, or was everybody rutting them? Really? Last, uh, Wednesday, or Tuesday, they was knifing it in. I had to go around section to make sure they was, uh, was getting knifed in, cuz it didn't look like it. You know, it was.
Sure enough.
They had them in, so.
Must not get much frost. No. Our guys went out and did some stinking late last week and they said it softened up a lot. They were able to drive hubs in the ground, so.
Well, a hundred and twenty days, the grass will be getting green.
Boy, that sounds like a long time out.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to think that's more than twenty than a hundred and twenty.
I suppose now our local current branch or Sexton go, did go up to that.
They went to Storm Lake instead.
Oh, they went to Storm Lake, but you guys don't get to go to Storm Lake.
They went with the-
They're different districts.
They were in Fort Dodge though.
They're different districts.
They were both on Fort Dodge.
They go where most of the borders are. We just got part of their district, so they go where the- Eric invited them, but they-
Yeah, they told us that they were gonna go to that one, cuz they have, you know, there's different supervisors.
They were both at drainage meeting on Friday, yeah, they, they talked a little.
They gave us a-
Pretty good update.
Yeah, for what they felt was going on, so. Okay, here we are, drainage. I guess looks like the first thing that, uh, drainage thirty-five branch C. On there is approved, pay estimate number four, King Construction. Do you have a voucher for that, or where we add that, or?
Uh, yeah, we need to talk about it.
Yeah, we need to talk, is right.
So. Yeah, this is for work done, uh, to date and the biggest thing I saw in their request was they still had a big number for stockpiled materials. I had my guys count the pipe out there, um, last week and there was like seventy-eight pipe allowed because of that. So, I knocked their request down, um, over a hundred thousand dollars because the material's been incorporated in the job already, so. What you see includes the adjustment for our actual materials on site, thirty-three thousand dollars, plus the work they've done to date. This request, they put in eleven-hundred-and-ninety-three feet of, uh, fifteen-hundred D, that's a little lighter weight pipe, and five-hundred-and-fifty-two feet of the heavier pipe that we put in through roads and where the digging is deeper, so. You're all familiar with how things have gone out there. I think you probably got word Friday that I talked to them first thing in the morning, they were gonna be in there digging this morning. I have not checked on them.
They're not there.
They're not there yet?
They're not there. They weren't today, twenty.
Okay, okay. Well, we've got a guy coming down to keep tabs on them and the branch, uh, supply project. Um, so, yeah, we'll, we'll call them as soon as I'm out of here again. That's, they said they were gonna be here.
I don't think we need to pay them, they're not gonna work.
There you go. That's, we talked about that in the office and like, well, how do you not pay them? Well, they gotta demonstrate they're gonna be in there working.
That's right.
I mean, even though this is-
Even though they got money owed to them, they're not there working.
There you go, there you go.
Why pay them up to date, they're gonna sit for another six months?
There you go. Yeah, I'm all for it. I think this should be a week-to-week thing. If they get in there and make significant progress, so that this just kinda catches them up a little, fine. But, to be right up to date when nothing's happening, I'm, I'm with ya.
Well, we can appreciate the fact that they had a machine that was broke.
Yeah.
Um, but by the same token, um, Eric and I have visited. If I'm contracted to haul X amount of bushel of corn for, say, Otis and Elevator, whoever it is, and my truck breaks down, and if I wanna continue to try to get some type of cash, I better either figure out a way to get another truck or, or combine, if I'm cutting combine, whatever it is. I figure, are they, I don't know how many days it has been broke, but they should have figured out a way to get somebody here to, you go over to the other job site and that place looks like an ant?
Yeah, they'll-
Uh, they're just all over the place.
Trish and I talked about that this morning, it's like, it's, the, the problem is even emphasized because there's a contractor just a few miles away that's been going gangbusters and then here we sat with this slow progress.
And I'm, I'm, I can sympathize with the fact that it's broken, but I talked with Dial and Dial's numbers were, um, five-hundred-and-eighty-four feet of pipe that are on the ground out there. So, that, that eight foot chunks, that's like seventy-three pipe that are laying on the ground, that have been there for quite some time.
Yep.
Um, thirty-nine-hundred-and-fifty feet in the ground with the project at ten-thousand-seven forty-five, so.
My math isn't even very good and, uh, I would say that's far less than half of the total project and this doesn't, doesn't calculate out here.
Including stockpiled materials, this pay estimate says forty-eight percent, so you take that off and it's considerably less than forty-eight.
Yeah, and I also got Dial's numbers, thank you for-
You would take, we withhold the whole thing or just cut back some more?
Well, I have no problem saying withhold the whole thing, at least temporarily.
Until we see movement.
Yeah.
Listen, since the twenty-first of September, there's been fifty-four working days and they've been here twenty-one. They've dug twenty-one days. Eight of those days were because they didn't backfill and put a berm around there and lost eight days and I hauled water for them so they could at least get cleaned up in two days rather than a week and a half. They're doing a nice job, but they need to be on, they need to be on-
Absolutely.
Is there any repercussions if they're not, I mean, they need to be out of there before the frost goes out? How can we make sure that happens and, cause when frost starts to go out, they gotta be done, or they will be done until after harvest.
Yeah.
And that's not gonna work for us, paying interest through another growing season.
And it's really not gonna work because now they're too far back to where, cuz we wanted to be, have that assessment by-
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, oh, I understand completely.
Yeah, cuz there was a split.
Yeah. So.
Who made the call on pulling them out of there? And sending them to another-
Needed. We never sent them anywhere.
No, no.
Oh, who in the company? Oh.
Well, I'm sure it had to come from the top.
I would think so.
I'm guessing it would come from Dave.
Yeah.
I mean, he would have to authorize it, cuz we had the, when we were told, what we told, that they were going to a sanitary sewer.
Yes, something in town, they had to finish wet conditions.
They had wet conditions out there and they would appreciate it if we would allow it. Well, at that point, you know, we didn't figure that it was gonna be as long as it was.
No, that's right.
And we used the theory if it was Humboldt and we needed somebody to come and we would appreciate.
That's all well and fine, but-
I understand.
It doesn't-
Every time, it, it just keeps coming around and kicking us right back in the backside when we don't have any progress made on this.
Bottom line, and I know the ki, guys, I mean, no gender thing meant, but that are keeping an eye on this and it's good to hear that they're doing a good job when they're doing it.
That part's good.
But, the expediency, because I went out there at the beginning of this project, it was a month after they started, they hadn't gone very far. I won't give a specific foot, and that was when they asked if this is not working, to follow the old tile line. Well, pretty evident, it did just so much rain this year.
So much.
And there was no issue with moving that. It was easily and quickly resolved, but it took them a month to ask the question. So, there's, and that was actually under pretty decent conditions and then they got that result, then they made some pretty good progress, did a nice job. And then, of course, we got more rain and rain and rain this year, but, you know, they just seem to be a day late. I don't wanna say a dollar short, but you have to keep at this and like Rick said, you go not very many miles to the west and there's an example of, I can't believe the progress that gurkeys are making.
Hearing what's been said, I move that we re, revisit the payment of pay estimate number four next week, depending on what kinda movements happen. Just reconsider it next week.
Just reconsider, not necessarily pay, but reconsider.
Reconsider.
Seems a problem.
Well, what's gonna change? I mean, if we get to a week from now-
We reconsider.
We can reconsider it. I don't, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, a week from now, I don't see that total amount being paid.
I'm, I'm certainly fine with that, I'm just, yeah.
Well, I, I'll set me three pipe out there and they go starting, uh, this morning and they're gone, seventy-three pipe at, or two-hundred-and-fifty, he told me they're doing like two-fifty a day when they're going, so that's only two days of, of digging, if they get it going again.
I second that motion, so we can have a discussion on it.
Alright, and now we can discuss.
Rick, can, should I give them notice anyway?
Yes.
Can you?
Well, absolutely, if you talk to them today again.
Run through that again on their pay estimate number four? Did you take the total of that? What is it, where is it in the timeframe and, and, you know, time and materials and that, where they're saying that they should be this far or whatever, forty-eight percent?
Forty-eight percent of the dollars would have been paid if this pay estimate was paid.
Forty-eight percent of the total, approximately.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that means less than half the pipes in the ground because the more expensive part is the first part, which is the bigger pipe.
Right.
So, uh, they gotta, you have to spend about seventy percent of the money to get halfway on the job, brother.
Well-
It's the difference in pipe prices.
Per this motion, does it make sense that in a week's time would be, I said, I still don't see that total amount, given what, everything we're discussing, but-
You see how much pipe they have in the ground, you see how much pipe they get delivered, cuz you're right, just doing the quick calculations, at three-hundred feet a day, that's two days worth of pipe.
The other side of the coin is, is that pipe coming from Humboldt or is it coming from, it looks like it's coming from what, down south? Is it Lakeview?
When I was told.
So, they're gonna have to, you know, they're gonna have to get on the horn and say, "Hey, we only got two days of pipe." Um, besides the fact, you just don't get semis out across that field when, unless they-
And when I talked to King, they were gonna clear an area of snow along the path, so that it would freeze harder as far as the trucks driving on it for delivery of pipe. We've had this delivery problem of pipe all year, like, this job and at least two others, two in Palo Alto County. So, the contractor was begging for pipe, didn't give them, we have one right now in Palo Alto, he's getting, um, I can't remember how many pipes it is, six a day? So, they're such a big pipe, they can't get any. Takes him less than half a day to get a delivery in the ground.
Yeah.
We don't have the ability to control that when it's coming out of Lakeview.
No.
We don't have any control out of here, but-
Same company, isn't it?
No.
No.
Not same company?
Fort Harris down here.
Okay.
They're west of Moonee, they're the same. The one in Lakeview is completely different.
Okay.
Hand, handcuffs?
Handcuffs.
Handcuffs, concrete products.
So, we revisit it on next week? That's our wish?
Well, I guess that's fine. We're not gonna pay anything today and then we're gonna have further discussion in a week, but, and I know Rick and I have talked, that the King Construction grasped the gravity of the situation. Per what you gentlemen have described, which Rick knows, we know.
Yeah, I've told them that multiple times about, yeah.
When we, when they were awarded the contract, King, the bid tab was for Holland.
This is a huge deal.
It's only five thousand, well, almost five thousand more, with the change orders that have been involved. And this was February, gravel made it. It's only ten thousand dollars cheaper.
Don't tell them that or we'll all be hanging on the trees. I know. King, that's, that's a pure example right there.
Cut an option, if you decide to throw them off the job and get the bonding, get them involved, that's a possibility.
No.
But that's, it's gonna be delayed significantly. The best option is if they get in there and get to work by far.
Well, they just need to get to dig it then, and then they can just pay.
Absolutely, yeah.
But they gotta get there.
Absolutely.
See, at one time, they had, they had two machines there. Okay, one broke down. What happened to the other one? Why did they take it away?
I don't-
Well, they took the one machine to Moonee, cuz that was the closest place that they could get it worked on.
Yeah.
That's what they told me when I visited with them.
And then the second, the second machine had the, the, the chain broke?
I don't know about the second.
That's true.
The other broke.
And that broke because of the operator there.
But both machines are backed out there now, aren't they?
They're back there, they're there now.
Okay, so, I guess the, the thing that we gotta hope is when they go out there and start digging, it, cuz that probably is gonna be a little crunchy down there where they're getting to the depth. Once they get it opened up and start digging again, hopefully, um, they're gonna be able to go. I'm sure that gurkeys over there are the same way, but not Mondays, cuz they didn't work Saturday, but the amount of pipe they're burying in the day there.
Yep, they're working this morning, I drove a little bit by there, they're working this morning.
Just the heat off of their machines should be, well, helping warm the ground over there, but anyway, all we can do is do it, hopefully.
If there's a positive to this, if you can trust the extended forecast, for this time of year, it looks relatively favorable.
Yes, yes.
To the point of actually even a little above average.
Yeah.
So.
Lee, I've been watching that.
If there's a positive, that...
A lot might happen this week.
Well, I think we're giving them an opportunity to get rolling.
Yeah.
And if the weather can remain favorable, uh, they can keep going along, and that's what they're being asked to do.
I'm, yeah.
I think, I think they need to be emphasized a little bit to communicate, because it doesn't seem like they can communicate back this way at all.
Are you think...
Bruce has tried to get a hold of it and there's no communication back to him, and Harlow's tried and, you know, it'd be nice if they at least acknowledged.
Exactly.
Good point, Dial.
Well, let's, let's vote.
I think we have the discussion. Call for the votes?
Yep. All those in favor, withholding this payment?
Aye.
Foes same sign, motion carries, unanimous.
And it goes the same way next month, or next week, if they don't get on the job.
There you go.
We're gonna pay them till they start working.
Funny how the dollars seem to make a difference.
Well, whatever it takes, but, you know, I wouldn't necessarily have given this year, expect it was completed by now, but I would have expected it had been a lot closer to completion.
Yes, this was a disaster here for...
But we've already taken a lot of that into consideration.
Yes, you have, absolutely.
Well, with that, Rick, I have a couple of things, I'm, I'm curious to know that, and I know you guys aren't in Humble, but we need to figure out somehow, some way that we're gonna either chart, um, because from day one, when I visited with Rick Peterson Friday about this, um, I'd like to be able to look, that we can go back in our records and say, well, this is what happened the first week, they were here four out of the seven days, this, week two, week three, and just keep it running total, because when we're trying to do this on phone memory, um, and I talked to you about texting me every day because I was going north and I...
Yeah.
I'll send you a text if I don't see any movement, so that we can start, I think that we need to do that as a, so that we...
Regular thing. And we've got daily inspection reports that, that we can maybe try and summarize something like that.
Well, I visited with Dial and I, I'm pretty sure that they have a fairly close finger on their pulse.
Absolutely.
But I think that moving forward, I, I, I don't think that we're asking for the world, whatever company or whatever engineer is gonna be doing it, I think that we should be able to at least get an update on a, every week or every two weeks.
Yes.
Send us an email and say, this is what the day is where.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. Dial's been tracking this, I see you've got records, and I just wanna emphasize the communication, and I'll use Gurkies as a good example. Uh, one of the head contractors, Jeremy Moss, that works there, I can ask him, you know, I've been out there, I've talked to him, I can just check, uh, and know where they're at. I knew about the gas line, I knew what his plans were of doing this and doing that. Communication is stellar. It's stellar. And you know where you're at.
Well, I have one guy asked me about that.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but I think their communication with, uh, you guys, the engineering side, has been extremely...
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's been good.
Because it's...
All their cell phones and numbers and...
I just, well, and I mean, they will answer your call, they will return your text, you just ask a question, they'll tell you right what they're doing. And then if there's an issue, we act on it now, I think that's what Bruce is saying, we don't wanna know something a month after the fact, week after the fact, you keep things moving a lot quicker.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, just okay it, just okay.
I'm gonna make a mention going there.
To you guys, thank you for your patience, because I would have been nervous.
For open ditch crossing.
You guys have been wonderful.
For landing a blowed ditch.
You've been helpful with the contractor, um...
It'll be paid by...
I can't imagine frustration, because we feel it, you have to feel it even more.
Well, don't ever feel like you're bothering anybody when you call, because I'm as frustrated as you, I don't know, I'm, every time I brush my hair, it looks like it's getting lighter and thinner and... It's frustrating to, to think that, you know, uh, that's where those guys hang their hat when they do these bigger projects, so, but in a...
They could get invaded by...
We gotta, just gotta get it done, so, anyway.
Quick question, how long will it take, once the project's done, to close it, so you can figure out assessment, how long, all that's...
Uh, well, the, you have to have a completion hearing, it has to be at least ten days after the report is filed with the final passment, so they have to be done, completely done, um...
I can levy before, without a completion. It might be two levies.
Remind me, does this, does this go up there towards Harlow's, is it one underneath?
Goes under the highway.
Under the highway?
Yeah.
So at what point are we gonna have to open that up and then try to petition the state to say, you think we can...
We've got it permitted already.
I understand that, but that was, thinking we were gonna be there in September, not January.
None of the work will be on the right-of-way, it'll all be bored from one side to the other, so it, it, it won't interfere with any traffic, it won't be any danger to the public.
I didn't figure it would, but I just wondered how, I mean, that's gonna be a pretty good sized hole to bore that kind of pipe underneath there, but what is it when it goes under there?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, yeah.
That won't take them long to do.
No, it won't take long to do, but you still have to... The bridge out here is a prime example, Friday down here, we were told Friday that we can't open the bridge because they haven't got the lines painted on, but we go down to the drainage meeting on Friday in Fort Dodge, and Keith Thankall makes an announcement before, if you haven't been down by the, you know where Amigos is, that elevator? They're hand painting marrows on this. Go down there, the guy's doing it right now, painting it with a brush. And I looked at these guys, I said, well, how the hell can you paint with a brush a mural on the side of an elevator? We can't paint real lines on the highway up here to open our looking bridge.
I'd go down and look if they weren't painting.
Oh, I think, but still, it's like, I'm sure that stuff that they spray on there publicly...
Yeah, yeah.
And we're just frustrated on that too, so, you know?
We use the cab and get it across the bridge, we'll show...
What's the latest date for opening that now?
Get to it tomorrow or the next day, somebody could be out there with that tape that they can lay out to get it open, they won't leave a hole in it.
Oh, for the love of, I'm gonna be nuts having to go around that thing too many more times. Well, you know, if you go up through Deer Slayers Avenue, up there by County K or the Foster Bridge in the middle, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon, it looks like a shooting gallery with deer running across there, and I, I just detest the one up there with all them deer. So hopefully we'll get it open.
Your cubs beggar those deer.
Yeah, they still bounce off the front end. So you don't have to print that either. I'll have all the deer, deer hunting's open again now, so. Okay.
Yeah, uh, yeah, um, we did a few updates from time to time, we should just be more regular about it.
I think that we should get at least every week, I would just like to put her, and, uh, the five board people on a email list that, you know, on last week's, uh, for Gurkies crew, they were there X amount of days out of the X amount of days, and Kings or whoever the contractor is, so that we can at least have the ability to say, I didn't get a drive up by there, but I know they were there five out of five.
Yeah. Uh, the only hangup I see is our guys beyond the job until late Friday afternoon, having them stay to do a report for Monday morning, I don't know if I can get them to do that, but I can ask.
I don't think you have to, I mean, if they're there Friday morning, I don't think that we can need to know that they left at five oh-two.
We don't need a formal report, and you can relay it to Trish, the latter part of the week.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be at the end of the day on Friday.
Well, that's what I guess I'm just saying.
I mean, you know, I mean, it's not like, oh, man, it's so much different Friday than it was balance of the week, if they're making progress, if they're, you can just say, you know, there isn't any issues or whatever, because some of the stuff we've known after the fact, the machine leaving, the going here, going there.
When I go by Gurkies and I see the lights on out there, I'm pretty sure that somebody isn't out there just checking oil in the machines, they're warming up. When I go by Kings, there's no lights on, it's pretty easy to say, nobody's there yet.
Yeah.
And usually that's, what, John, six, seven, makes that stuff running up there?
Yeah, six thirty.
So they're there, stuff's warming up, and shortly thereafter, they're digging.
I'm sincerely...
Seven o'clock, the dirt's live.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just hoping it's just the start of a week and they're gonna come in and be here for the week.
This, this meeting's all videoed, I'll call them up and tell them what's the video, why haven't they worn me?
There you go, there you go.
All right, anything else?
I don't think so, uh, Gurkey, oh, Gurkey is, last, we knew late last week, he's still making the decision whether we're gonna try and cross that gravel road or just get to it. Uh, last we heard, they're gonna try and get through it, so we'll be out there, we'll be checking with them every day.
That's kinda like Bruce is saying, then, then let us know.
Yes, yeah.
Because, yeah, they're, they're on a, the weather plays a huge factor.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
If we're above average and it isn't horrific, I got a feeling they'll get through that.
Things we kept an eye on is like the rock, with the moisture we got, it was starting to freeze in chunks, so they're running their excavator over it and breaking that up, which will help, we don't want big balls of rock in the trench, so. They're, they're being conscientious about it.
Will you go on that one east, or the north-south road there and look at that, look down through there and then go around to the other side and then look at the finished completion, what it looks like? I mean, it looks really, they were really doing a nice job.
They got most of that all leveled on Friday.
Yeah, the hunter mark, call me unhappy as I've ever heard him when they did it.
I'll tell you what, when I heard that, I thought, that's saying something.
He said, thank you, three or four times on the phone, as far as them, because we've been trying to get them to level, understanding that there was getting to be frost in the tiles. And they finally decided to give the go, and they did pretty well. They said, I can go out through the spring one time over, it'd be great.
Coming from Gurkies themselves, their intention is to do what they can do now, which is less than ideal conditions.
Yeah.
And he said, it won't look very good, but this isn't their first project, this time of year, we can go back in the spring and queue that up, it will look real good.
Yes, our concern was that the, what they backfilled in the trench was clay and it was frozen, and we wanted a foot taken out of that trench so that we ended up with two feet of black dirt in the trench area, without the top being more than twelve inches higher than it was naturally, that's how we had it written in the spec. So, and it's working out, somehow it's settled, they removed it, I don't know what they did, but Jordan was out there and said they...
They do a good job with it, very good.
Well, it looks like they have about two loads of pipe at twenty-seven feet, are those twenty?
I think those are twenty.
So I think they got two loads there, so that should be pretty close to getting to that road.
Yes, should be very close.
Looking at cross on the road.
When?
We don't do crossroads this time of year, that's one of the areas.
Well, they, they hope to get there this week and make the decision, so.
You can probably get the number from one of the, either Rick or Eric, or talking to the informant out there.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, just because backfilling frozen material under the road never actually, never actually firms up, and end up having to redig it in the spring.
Well, that's the reason here, they're trying to decide when.
Yeah.
Like, where to pull the load. All right, Trish, what do you got?
Uh, DD eighteen, with the drone flight thing that we had from, from West Garth, you know, there was a lot of tile, or, um, ditch bank failures. Uh, I forwarded...
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Forwarded that on to the FEMA, um, grant person, and he went out and looked, there were fourteen, um, sites that he had identified. And I guess with that, he has an estimate of twenty thousand dollars to fix it. And I was wondering, do we do this on a work order? Um, and...
So this is over there, uh, north?
Burnin', um, fifteen, what is it, fifteen, sixteen, twenty and twenty-four, or something like that, all in that little loop.
What's your question?
Well, twenty thousand dollars is the estimated repair cost for that from the grant writer, and, or the, yeah.
Do you wanna do it as a work order, do you wanna...
And if it's a work order, can we assign, like, Rick Peterson, County K Rick?
Be as simple as way to do it, wouldn't it?
I checked with his availability and he's available and would be happy to do it.
Oh, you said there's fourteen different malfunctions?
Yeah, they'd have to pull the soil from the bottom of the ditch and reshape the bank.
Right. Well, my question on that, and I might be signed off on the drone flying, and you have some more to do on the outlet end of that.
Yeah, water's just too high.
I know, I asked, uh...
Jason probably talked to you, yeah.
And, uh, anyway, I guess as far as that goes, what we have seen, which is how you found out on the fourteen and the fix, can we incorporate any of the extracurricular stuff, tearing out the old bridge abutments and keep bot clean out with this? It's not part of the sloughing off, but, because he, well, he's there.
Yeah, that, it, it probably would not be part of the FEMA, but absolutely, he'd be delighted to do more while he's there.
Well, you, yeah, no, it's not adding on to this, because these are fixes from sloughings that we've seen, but if he's going up the ditch, down the ditch, however you wanna say it, and we've identified...
DD eighteen? There's one private crossing, the bridge abutment that was going across it, says restricting water.
Yeah, the abutments are pretty tight.
Pretty tight.
Which none of that is included in the fix things that Trish mentioned, but...
It'd be great to have them do it.
Doesn't that make sense?
While they're there, I mean, there's no sense in tracking someone else in there to...
Well, he's going along and there's a sloughing off and they fixes that, but it's also an area, and we don't wanna a determination, and they...
So we could do it as two separate projects, but one per time.
Yeah, having to build it separate.
Two different work orders.
Yeah, the fix is what you're saying, but if it's the same, which it will be in some of these, or near the location, per, I'm thinking of the drone footage and just roughly saying, the upper part of the ditch is probably, that's where some of the bridge, old bridge stuff is, it needs to be tore out, and probably some areas of clean out.
Yes.
Um...
To just make two different work orders on it, keep FEMA separate.
Yes.
Thank you. Then with that, would, will there be any benchmarks and stuff like that to go from?
We can set something, I mean, we've surveyed that through the years, we, we know where the bottom's supposed to be.
Okay.
So my, my question is then, if we have something holding, uh, while he's there, are you gonna have him pull that out to... So we don't have our friends moving back in and setting up camp again to...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because if you don't pull that dirt out of there, or whatever's causing the, the water to be retained, then they're gonna be right back in there re-fortifying the fort.
Right, well, I think our biggest concern there is what, they haven't flown yet, and it's the outlet end of it, as far as our industrious rodents are concerned. Uh, it seems like from that whole drone flight, there's not a lot of beaver problems there.
No, just at the lower end.
Yeah, the lower end, so this is more or less, yeah, but well noted, and then I actually contacted the trapping guys to go out and take a look for the video, I gave them kind of a couple of locations to look at. So, yeah, we can take care of that, take care of the sloughing problems, but then incorporate a couple of the other things that we know about, so yes, you're gonna have to go out and check a couple of those areas, and I think it's the up, more upper end.
Yeah. Did you get anywhere with the dynamite possibility?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Yep, I won't, I won't say publicly Dave's discussion on it, but, uh, so I, I don't want him to get any more trouble than he's already in. Yes, I mean, we have to, that's a serious deal.
Oh, absolutely.
If all the rest of this being said and done, fixing, cleaning, bridge abutments removed, if the root cause is where it dumps out, we've gotta, we've gotta do something down there.
Otherwise, you're fixing it.
No.
And that was part of the IDDA thing Friday. We, did we talk about it in the big meeting, or is, was it just the breakout?
Probably you guys.
We talked about important stuff, you know? Um, Doug did cite some, yeah.
Yes.
Some specific, um, co-sections where we can clean farther on down.
And I highlighted that in something I gave you here a while back.
Yes, you did, and so we have a leg to stand on.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, if we, we have the ability to do that, then it all, if we can coordinate it, then it should be done accordingly, so that it, there's no sense going back next spring or next summer or next, if we have the ability and we have a contractor that is willing to be there.
Right, I'd say a little, two separate deals, the fixing and the bot clean out areas and the old bridge abutment thing, it's probably a one, is... it's probably a one, is all coordinated. This outlet thing, we need a little more data.
Yes.
I mean, what, drone footage and, you know, obviously whoever gets the drone footage should have some physical references.
Yes.
And then, I think that's a separate deal.
Yes.
To get that lower end opened up, if you will.
Yes.
You gotta keep, you gotta keep FEMA's on one.
Right, Dave said, anything that, Chris said that there's fourteen areas, like Dave said, just that's a separate bill, take care of it. Anything past that...
All of FEMA's is on separate.
That, and it's also got a deadline, right?
Yep. Which, it's already been noted prior to the deadline.
I get in trouble at home when I hear that answer.
There is a deadline, but it's...
There is a deadline, it's got to be reported. Anything that's found has to be reported by twentieth of December.
So we already got the...
That's a deadline from FEMA that...
Right.
Everything's got to be reported, so if these farmers are out of the field now, they found blowouts and stuff out in the field because of the excessive rains, they need to get it reported.
Um, so with the other part of this open ditch thing, not the FEMA part, is it going to be under fifty thousand?
Yes.
Then we have that ability, right?
Able, ability, yeah.
Rick, I think what's gonna fall on you guys is to designate the, if it's removal of an old structure or an area cleanout.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, and we've got the old plans and old benchmarks and, yeah.
Give them something to go on.
And Rick Peterson's real good to work with, Travis' son is good to work with.
Cause they love to do it, and we're gonna have a lot better year next year, and a lot of this is gonna get done, and we're gonna discuss getting rid of obstruction at the end of it.
Yes, yeah.
And I do think we have a leg to stand on.
Absolutely.
It's gonna take a little working through, but we're gonna get it done.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And another question, DD joint with Wright County one dash twenty-seven, it's over... I think it's a Lake Township on the...
Seventeen?
Yeah. It goes by Mark Harvey's place and that. Um, Wright County's doing a partial ditch cleanout from seventeen to the east.
Did you hear this, or did they call us?
I heard it, it's...
Okay, well, I just, I didn't know if they were talking to us yet.
Yeah, they are talking. They're nice.
They're not mad at us yet.
No, their feelings are hurt. Um, so anyway, it's kind of in a Natural Creek area also at the end of it, but then they are going to be dealing with the railroad, possibly.
So this is up, the first crossing?
You can see it just above the, way on the right side of the map, just above the W for Wright County joint one twenty-seven.
Right, yes.
Right above the two mile...
Right there. Isn't that one twenty-seven right there?
Down.
That up by the cage green chicken?
Yes, by two hundred, along seventeen, by two hundred.
How about Wright joint two twenty-eight, joint one dash twenty-seven?
Go down where the...
Down?
Blue line is, over.
Over.
Up.
Up.
Up a little, see the blue line?
This one?
That's the ditch.
This is the ditch?
Yeah.
And the, and...
And that's, so they're doing something...
It needs to do.
Uh-huh. Do we want to do something to our site? 'Cause the landowner in that area suggested it might be a good idea, since they're cleaning out the outlet part, to do the rest of it also.
I wonder if they're doing this whole section, or this, which looks like...
It's just kind of...
I'm gaking a wild guess, without having their detailed maps of Wright County. Is this a dredge ditch?
Part of it, but then the rest of it goes to Natural Creek.
And then does it turn back into a dredge ditch? Are they doing this?
No, it goes...
Doubt it.
But it runs over that cur, there, just...
We're gonna do, in this area, should we do something further into Humboldt County? If need, if it needs it, yes, 'cause you could have the same deal, you could probably have the same contractor.
Absolutely.
And they don't, they...
It's a way to do it.
They, contractors do charge for trips.
Yeah.
So if someone's there...
Location.
Yep, everything.
I can't remember, I'd have to look again what, um, it was Dan Henninger, I believe, was the one doing the spot cleanout for them, and he was relatively cheap and expensive.
Well, see what, can you get in...
Do they have an engineer, do they have an engineer working on, so they know? No?
Probably just going to hard bottom, I mean...
Yeah, they just spot clean out, so they don't have...
They don't have an engineer involved in any specifications?
Can you see if there's been anything done to that?
I'll just draw the thought, if, when we're down here a decent day in the area, should we drone it?
Um...
Not today.
I don't know.
Too much moisture in the air today. Any moisture is...
A little booger might freeze up and drop to the ground.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just...
Just a thought, I had a mention for it.
Well, remember, like, like, speaking of patience level, how much stuff I, and I'm just kidding you, the drones are pretty cost-effective, they look at a lot of area in a quick time, but then you still have to go back in and...
Well, I'd like to just have Trish check and see what we, what the history is on that, and see if it's been, if anything's been done to it for, there's nothing been done in twenty-five, fifty years, or whatever the number is, at least you can give us a report, and then we can... Does that, is he working on it now? Gets close, well, at least, we can just do a preliminary check and...
Really don't want them to stop at the county line when it needs to be X feet more into Humboldt County.
And I know Rick Peterson has spoke to Mark about other issues on drainage right in that area.
In that area.
So he may have some knowledge on it, so I don't know.
All right, perfect.
Like Bruce mentioned, would it be too much to ask to get just a little more information about that? And I think it's a great idea to continue on, but we wanna know, is it five hundred feet is a mile?
Hasn't, hasn't been done for a while?
Yeah, and I just asked Doug about it Friday at the meeting, 'cause we were talking about it.
If you wanna put that in the minutes, if Bruce had a good idea, I wouldn't be opposed. Doug'd probably be one of the few in five years, four years. Anything else? Ben is waiting impatiently over here, he's saying, "Here we are again."
I'm moving, go ahead, drink.
We're fine. I, I waited to show up, 'cause it's not raining.
Oh. Well, we got stood up by...
Yeah, we have another cat, didn't show up, so, not raining.
Anything else?
I think for official business, that's good.
We have a motion to go out, I heard.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign? We are out at four nine. The other thing, um...
Is it possible to have a, about a two-minute recess?
Sure.
Okay.
Were you, did you guys discuss anything on record, so, we had the presentation?